Mr. Alvin, I'm willing to sign a nondisclosure agreement with your organization. We would appreciate receiving the information by Monday, June 18th. You may submit the information in a sealed envelope and deliver it to the county clerk's office. Yes?
Or should I say or to us directly? Because if he's bringing it in on Monday, we mustn't be able to advise.
Or to the board directly, to the clerk's office in a sealed envelope, or to the board directly?
Mr. Alvin will then report back to the board and execute a session in this, you know, viability of the person. You are welcome to attend the session and we will facilitate it to be timed at a time for both yourself and Mr. Alvin to be present.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I will print it out and then you guys can actually put the pad in.
Good.
Because I know sometimes I read things. And, um... Do you want this to go out to Lincoln Park Manor or to John Grace's, um, home's interest?
Both.
I suppose just Lincoln Park Manor.
You don't think to him, to his business? Because it's my understanding he's not there a lot.
Um, I, I put on the top to Lincoln Park Manor address and then I'll make sure that I send to, in and out point his actual business interest.
Good.
Because I think I have some.
I don't. Have any idea what it is?
Thank you. You're welcome for doing that. I think 16 covers it as long as it's not like a four-hour meeting.
That's the biggest they had.
I figured. I bought the only one that Hayward's had.
I mean, they've got much up there for all the same holes.
Oh, I think I bought the only singular one they had. Mind if I just read it for the record?
Yeah.
Um, June 4th, 2018, John Grace, Lincoln Park Manor. Dear John, the Lincoln County Commissioners in regular session on May 31st, 2018 made the following motion pertaining to Lincoln Park Manor. Alexis Flue moved to request from Lincoln Park Manor the balance sheet, income statements, cash flow statements, census information, and cost reports for 2015, 16, 17 to current under a nondisclosure agreement for examination in executive session with Doug Alvin as the county's consultant seconded by Alja Wallace, motion carried. The board has accepted the help, um, from, from Doug Alvin, Northwest Kansas Economic Innovation Center to review the documents listed above to assess the feasibility of the nursing home. Mr. Alvin is willing to sign a nondisclosure agreement with your organization. We would appreciate receiving the information by Monday, June 18th. You may submit the information in a sealed envelope and deliver to the county clerk's office or to the board directly. Mr. Alvin will then report back to the board in executive session his opinion on the viability of the nursing home. You are welcome, uh, no D, Dawn, to attend that session and we will facilitate a time that works for both yourself and Mr. Alvin to be present. And then the board. With those few small corrections, I move to approve.
Alvin, sorry. Is there any further discussion?
I guess I don't, I'm not sure that we need that for the board directly. I think when it comes to the county clerk's office, it is coming to the county commissioners.
I just didn't know.
I think that's...
It was speeded up a lot probably.
I think that's kind of unnecessary to put that in because all our correspondence pass through the county clerk's office.
I just didn't know if he'd feel comfortable leaving it.
Or if, like you said, if he wanted to come in to, to be on the agenda, he could bring in. Yeah, I don't have a problem omitting it.
I just think, we just, we never, I guess, never ask. Everything comes to the county clerk instead of the board directly.
I would agree. Are you okay with the board?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. There's no further discussion, all over, everybody was out.
Aye.
Good morning. Conservation District's here. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Really? You're the chair, honey.
You're in luck. If you're in luck, we're having kind of a slow day.
That's right.
You won't have to sit here for an hour waiting for this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, um, we have here, um, to present our budget for 2019 fiscal year. I have enclosed what we have done in 2017 since we just completed that year, um, for you. A lot of educational activities, um, to try and make our effects go as far as, as possible with, with the education of both youth in the county as well as producers. We have two cost share programs. We have the non-point source program, um, which is basically we cover onsite waste system replacement, abandoned well pluggings. There's other practices that we cover for those who desire to, we need priorities that we do in that program. And then the water resources program, we provide cost share for terraces, um, both new and rebuilt, flowerways, ponds, um, things like that that are going to help with erosion and sediment control and pollution getting into our, our streams and our water supply. Also including our packet there is the budget for fiscal year 19, um, as well as a copy of the state aid to conservation districts that are provided to you guys every year so you can see what the other counties in the state provide for us. Just as a reminder, we have the state, well supposedly, um, match up to $25,000 under matching. Of course, you know, the state's fiscal issues that they had, um, three or four years ago so they cut us. So you give us the 20,000, a couple years they gave us 16,000. This year they're going to give us 17, so they're kind of working back up to that matching fund level, so.
They've already dedicated a dollar amount or, or you were talking about 18?
Yes, yeah, for 18. Their, their fiscal year starts in July, but it's our calendar year 18, so.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. So we're asking now for next year's funds, so, um, okay, yeah. So.
We did up that for this year. We looked back at it since 14, 2014 was the last time we asked for an increase, so.
Now you have the...
The state, with the state cabinet kind of...
Well, if you believe what you read, the state's rolling in the cash.
I know. So they are giving us, what, $800 more this year than what they did last year, so maybe we'll eventually get back up to that, you know, their match. Set up to $25,000 is what they will match. Other than that, it's like 13% is what they have cut previously, so.
They would match, what, you give, they would match the 20,000 for 20,000 and it would make it come out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even that way, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We have, if you look at our budget, we've tried to cut, we've shaved back, um, wages, we've cut travel, you know, and you know your hotel and your mileage and everything else is going up, but we've tried to shave back as much as we can.
So when someone does, um, let's say revamps their, um, sewage system or something like that, when they apply, you guys are part of that?
Yes.
When they apply for the reimbursement to do?
Yes.
Right.
And is there a separate, they, they can apply, this would be a local board, but they can also apply through the state agencies as far as?
Uh, no, we, we get our money from the state. We get our cost share money from the state.
We are that ancient, that transposer.
So if and when you apply for the, um, how am I trying to say this? What is it called?
Septic system.
Right, so when you apply for that reimbursement, this is the only place that that money comes from locally?
Right.
When, if you get approved or for whatever amount?
From the state, from the state cost share.
But do they apply directly to you or to?
Yes, they come, yeah, yeah. They come to us with an application and either they see Sean Estrel first or they see us. If they've come to see us, then we send them to Sean because he has to come out and do the septic, the site check for us.
Yes.
So, and then if they're eligible, they have to meet four criteria to be eligible for septic system replacement, and if they meet those, then we give them a cost share contract if we have the funds available.
So how many of those did we do, like in 17, since 18 is not finished?
Um, we did four, I believe. With that. And this is separate, um, the budget here does not reflect cost share.
That's what I'm wondering, because I didn't see.
No, no, the budget is solely for our operating expenses, salary wages, travel, things like that. This, the cost share is a separate fund.
But they just go through you and you, okay.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah. And we are getting more funds this year than we did last year for cost, for cost share, so, which is good, um, so we can get that to go back up. I believe we're going to get about $5,000 more cost share dollars, so that'll be, you know, at least another project or a project and a half that we can get completed, um, in the county.
So then, just for my own clarification, are you, are you the employee of the board?
Yes.
Is that how that works?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm an employee of the board. We have five board members, Jep, here, um, David Blacker and Carlos, one of the other two board members. But yes, I work for the Conservation District and, yes. For 17, since 18 is not finished, you know, that's, I have an estimate, you know, what our...
Right, you're half, you're not halfway through the year yet.
Right.
So you're just, yep.
Right, yes. Yep. So we kind of have that ballpark.
So when you do four of those type of, um, reimbursement claims, what are, besides septic, what else?
On page.
Wait.
Page five in here.
If I didn't bring life.
One, two, three, four.
Okay, down in the middle.
Wells, waterway construction, terrace construction, that's all under water resource cost share.
Okay.
And then on point, the next paragraph, um, those are livestock waste, plugging abandoned wells, household waste systems, and that's it.
Thank you, yes, that clarifies, yeah.
Looks like we did three last year.
Three septic system replacements, two soil testing.
Yes. And then we just approved, um, one for a solar pump, so. And that's going to go on 18 because that was in 17, so yeah. But we try and make, we have a limit, so the limit that they get is $2,500 for a septic system replacement, just because it helps out a little bit. I mean, it's not going to replace the full thing, but it's, it's better than, than nothing, you know, if you come and get us to that.
And we've basically got all our funds allocated for this year, right? And we're waiting for...
Yes.
We've got more projects than we've got funding for from the state for cost share, so.
And those are going to come available by July.
They seem to have a lifespan, so they'll have a run out of the way.
Right. We consider, the state actually considers the lifespan as 10 years, so if they can come in and get cost share today, um, for building terraces or whatever, and then I guess in 20 years is the terraces, um, you know, if they're not functioning, then they could actually get cost share again in 20 years. But like a septic system, they could come in in 11 years if it's bad or whatever and get cost share again. So we have different lifespans on the different projects that we have.
So would you say that's the majority of your responsibility would be to prepare those cost share applications?
We do a lot of the applications, we do a lot of the education activities, um, that are included in there that I'm responsible for or we're responsible, um, we're held to a lot with that. Also, we have in our office, we have the Natural Resources Conservation Service, um, and they're the federal side, and I provide 50% of time working for them and then paying for my space and utilities and things like that. So we do all our cost share, I'm responsible for setting up all of their federally funded cost share programs, taking applications, things like that.
So you are part-time then for the Conservation District and you get reemb...
No, I'm, no, the only reimbursement we get for federal is my space and like paper, toner, use of copy, internet, computer, the administrative clients. That's what we get in return for me helping out in our CS.
They provide you an office.
They provide an office. If, if it weren't for them, then I'd have to be paying rent, I'd have to be paying utilities, I'd have, I mean, all of that. So, I mean, that's a big, tremendous, um, function there. So, but no, I'm full-time for them.
Full-time for soil conservation.
For soil, yeah, yeah.
And there's CRP seedings, there's drills that we run around, we have equipment that we run out, Patty takes care of that equipment, makes sure if it needs repaired or sets up the schedule so that it gets in all places.
Say what?
You sell trees.
Yes, sell trees, sell seeds, sell marketing plugs, um, yeah. So we, there's a lot.
Yeah.
That goes on, um, behind the scenes. Sometimes you just see the cost share, you know, there's all...
What are the, what's the line item for administrative expenses?
Um, that would be like our annual weeding that we have, we're required to have every year. Um, it would be if we have to buy, there's certain things that we have to buy, um, like envelopes, like can't use federal envelopes to mail out our...
No, you can't cross.
You know, so there's those types of things that we have, um, yeah. Postage newsletters, anything that goes, um, I, the administrative and the information education kind of overlaps a little bit because we can do, um, it just depends on how it fits in.
You can use those funds to put on one of your seminars or something.
Right, right. Yeah. But as you see, I have the majority of it honestly, I mean, it's salary and wages, so. The benefit I get is simply, you get annual leave every year and then papers. There's no insurance or anything additional on, on that, so.
No health insurance. Thank you for this write-up. I will read it. Thank you.
Anything else for the board?
Those are my questions.
Thanks.
That's, that's what I needed. Thank you.
We'll see where we're at, we'll try to help you out.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
You're running kind of late this morning, Howard.
It's starting to rain, so I had to quit.
It's raining? I don't know if that's a bad thing, though.
Dawn, are there any highlighters back there at all? Or in your desk, maybe? I just, if you have one, I would like one to use.
Here's the letter, and the girl said that Michael is not going to be able to make it, that getting a new piece of equipment delivered to him, new capital new employees, starting.
I've already approved this, good.
Yes.
Do you want two signed copies to send?
That's okay.
Or three, you can keep one.
Yeah, we can do that.
Preservation Board people, we have them down here.
So my understanding that the Conservation Board is pretty similar to the Bus Board in its setup, that they employ, well, no, because we're now paying, we're paying, so that's not true.
I don't, I don't know how that board's elected or they're elected.
They're elected.
That's what I was thinking. They're separate, totally separate.
So it's like a, well, yeah, do we have anything similar? Huh? Not a special mill levy? Oh, they're not nonprofit either, so. So they're just elected in the, whenever, whenever the election rotation comes up?
Not in any of our elections.
Oh, really? So they have their own election?
Their annual meeting, they have an election. And I think the members are divided the way the FSAs is, is the, the districts are the same. There's three. And the annual meeting's always in January or February.
How old, Joe, which group was that?
Um, Brady.
You sent, uh, notifications to these people, correct?
I...
That they had one that was more interesting?
Yes.
There were three?
We got a letter then from the Deborah perimeter.
Marian Sturz, that one.
Yeah. Marian came in and talked to us.
When she, yeah, those are the three. I think we had three second responses, right?
Terry didn't send anything more, but I know that she's interested.
She did say to me verbally that she is.
She does a lot.
But are there, but, so this doesn't have any district lines?
And Patty indicated that he wouldn't mind going off, so, correct?
Correct, if there was others.
Which one, this one?
So am I correct in saying that there were three people that responded the second time?
Yes. Well, four, I had one verbal.
One verbal.
From Terry Lillab, and the three additional correspondents, second.
I don't count that Deborah, or if she's ever submitted her message to them.
I think she, I think she indicated that, but she may at some point be or something someone said.
Yeah, I don't know if that counts. And you could probably include all of them, like, if there's any regulation of this to what size.
That may be helpful, since they're not meeting regularly, that you could still have a quorum if you stated that the quorum was just the majority of the board members and you had more board members to get people to participate.
It's harder to get a quorum if you have a large group than it is if it was smaller. I mean, that's, I run into that problems with.
Well, it's a 50-50, I mean...
Who, who set us up to a certain number of people? Any idea?
I don't. All I know is that, um, Duane Vinaida was kind of the spearhead of it, and the board was formed when they went to run the law, when nobody knows voted in.
Did they only do that once?
They've done it twice, and then they passed over time, and at that time there was no tax limits, and the commission was, and just, so the election process, there was no statutes to, to a charter organization on to bring a vote to the people, there was no requirement, the board that chose to, uh, the organization that they wanted to, but, now, so sure.
What, what do we allocate yearly right now? Do you know? Nothing? They could attend the Historical Society. They could attend the Historical Society meetings as...
Most of these do.
But I mean, instead of having just their own meetings, that way they wouldn't...
When they've done their projects before, like the Preservation Board did this Stone Arch Bridge project, basically what they would do is they'd go out and get donations, and Terry Lyle, like, I think is the one that had applied. They have two degree grants now, but for the chief grants, that will be great of all, then the county sponsored the grant. And then, basically, when it came time for their share of the cost to cut that up the grant, because, you know, it was a cost share.
They didn't have the funds?
Well, they would get donations, I'm assuming, and turn in them, because I know.
Is that the one that they did on 181? The, are you specific, when you say the Stone Arch?
That's done at Stone Arch.
Yeah, it was a silver. Did they use any of that on the depot? Or did they do that all?
That's historical, yeah, that was Historical Society, the way I understand it. So we had seven, and we were looking at three open seats, was it ten? Nine total, so we have six.
Well, three of them are residents. This perimeter, she's investing, she's investing a lot in.
Grant writing, I mean... This one was not pertaining to the Preservation Board. It was some other board. Not that one, different one. I think that one would be probably good, too. This one said the Hospital Board and Crime Restoration Board, so I'm just gonna set that to the side. And there were a couple that kinda said if needed.
Well, I think they're a whole, maybe a little more invested than Deborah's.
You think it'd just be local, there would be no state oversight or anything? We could just appoint them and let them work it out amongst themselves, that's the better. So if you just appoint these ones that are interested, you can let them work it out amongst themselves?
Well, there's probably more on the board that aren't active that might actually want to get off, too, so... I don't have a problem with appointing four, let them work out how they wanna do it. Ducks up the initial end. I'd entertain a motion, though. Or I will move, I don't care. Are we doing? Mary Ann? Marion? Terry? Deb, is that what we're talking about? You said you talked to Terry?
Yes, she did give me indication that she'd like to do that again. This is her.
I would move as we appoint. Terry Lyle, like, Mary Ann Sturts, Marion McReynolds, and Deb perimeter.
I think it's Parmenter, maybe?
Parmenter.
She signed it, Deb.
To the Preservation Board. Five seconds.
Five seconds.
Is there any further discussion? There's not, all of them voted at all.
Are those all done?
Yes.
Yes.
She'll let me to take my pile of paper clips, because I might need those.
Yeah, you can.
My buckets.
You got a bucket of them someplace that you...
I do. In his front, I'm kinda low.
I should clean out my desk drawer and burn them up there, I guess.
We don't like the ones that have the little grooves on them, because it tears the paper.
I'll try to remember to do that, I'll bring some up for you. If you reuse, recycle them. Well, Michael's tied up, you have something you wanted to talk about, election?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I will go ahead and send this to Michael, too. I did not this week, but I wanted to bring it up in the meeting, and I know he's not here, so I wanted to kill two birds with one stone, but I guess I'll just do it this way. We had talked about his utilization of this mobile 3-1-1 program. And, you know, I'm getting feedback that the employees in the Highway Department think that this is some unnecessary oversight being imposed by one of three commissioners, which is kind of comical, considering I asked for a map and I got a program that I don't have access to. So when I questioned the printout that we were given, these six sheets on all of the requests that were made by the motor operator, motor grader operators for their different routes, it's indicated multiple times that there are the same requests coming in, and that indicates to me that there's no follow-up as far as fixing that request. And I understand it does not need to be said to me, that you can't get everything done at once, and that it takes time to do some of these things. However, I don't really see a prioritization process, I don't see dates. I was indicating all of this concern to Michael at the last meeting, and then he wanted to know what were duplicates. And I have quite a few, and I'll list them individually to him, but just for example... One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. I have seventeen duplicate requests from one route. Um, one, two, three, four, five. I have five duplicated requests from another route. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Seventeen more duplicated requests. And I know that these are not just the system printing out two of the same, because they're not always, they are in the same order, but some of them have additional or reduced requests in the second time that they appear. So without a date on these things, I feel like this printout is not going to help us do any organizing whatsoever. But just, for example, we have here, let's see... We also have the shop office making certain requests, and I assume that's to log in the specific repairs needed. And so there are also duplicate ones on there, so that may explain, if he has an explanation for us, why some of these are just duplicated. But on this spreadsheet, he really needs to consolidate, we have two columns for the description, so instead of it being them having an option, just, they need to consolidate that into one column so we can see the description, and then we can add the date of the request, and then the date of the follow-up and the repair. Because a lot of these are simple, and that was our conversation last week. I have ten in front of me that just say clean ditches and culverts, but how can they do that without being given permission to make those one calls? I don't see why we have one person employed for twenty-five other employees to make all of their calls, to do that sort of work. It's just not making sense. And this indicates to me why there were only seventeen one calls last year to clean out ditches and culverts. I mean, if I have ten requests from one person, that means there should have been many more than seventeen last year for the whole department. So, again, this is, this is a management issue here that needs to be addressed. And I'd like to know what your plans are, the two of you as commissioners, to oversee this. Yeah. Well, I'll give you the first example right here. If this, if these were just duplicated for some reason, I have three in a row right here, all from the same person, okay? Eight twenty-five North Fortieth, three ninety-nine East Deer, and three seventy-seven East Deer, all from the same motor grader operator. And you go above that, and it continues, four eighty-eight East Bison, three seventy-three East Ride. But in between these, North Fortieth Road, there's twelve nineteen and eight oh five, by different operators.
Okay, so maybe, so maybe the initial operator is getting, is inputting, and then maybe they're assigning it to a different crew? Would that be maybe?
No, because every time it's the same address, it's the same person, the input person. This is the input person here. And what I'm saying is, they didn't just copy and paste accidentally twice, because the alignment is not the same. If you look above eight twenty-five North Fortieth, you have a different number for North Fortieth and a different operator and a different request. See, you have a culvert clean out there, I have a culvert clean out here, but it's by a different person and it's a different address. Then it continues with those same requests from that other, so... Well, without dates, we can't analyze this information. And I'm concerned that it's been almost a year, and we don't have...
I wonder if one is saying, this is the operator said, I want this, and this one is saying that they did it.
Those are two different addresses, though, what you're looking at.
Nope, you're right.
For example, see, this one has three thirty-six East Iron, removed from road. Remove trees and pile up to be burned, will need chainsaws, loader, motor grader, bobcat, and trucks. And that's not on here. So maybe this one got done?
Remove trucks and pile up for burn, will need chainsaws, loader, motor grader.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, that's another duplicate. I forgot to mark it then, it is a duplicate.
I think he did say that, that the same, if one put in a project that was gonna require more than one of them, then it got also added in as to his partner's.
Well, I, I thought he was trying to explain that it, that then they go in and they assign it to, and so that every person that is assigned to it will get listed as a separate.
But that's not what this is showing, because this is just showing, showing the same person over and over with the same addresses. I've tried to mark, like, these two are duplicate. Clean ditch, clean ditch, clean ditch, cut and trim trees, piles need burned, piles need burned, cut and trim trees, and those are all... Mm-hmm. And it's the same, see, it says flagged by, that's the title of that column, who it is flagged by. So they're on this map.
So if one of them is being assigned, then you're not getting the column that says that it was assigned to?
Well, and it doesn't say a date, like, if, if they said that they, they noticed that this particular stretch of ditch needs cleaned, it's not saying a date. That way, if it does get done a week to three weeks later, we don't know. I mean, one of these could be a request, and one of these could be a completion, but it sure doesn't say that. And I'm sure all of these things didn't get done, because a lot of them are requests to clean ditch. And so my question is, how, how do you fix that problem when a motor grader operator says that, hey, I have ten different stretches a mile where I wanna clean ditches? But that requires a one call for all of them, and possibly more equipment, depending on the need there. I mean, there's gotta be a better way to make these individuals self-sufficient without waiting around on one person who's responsible for a thousand miles to get to their particular request. I feel that they don't have enough individual authority, and if we can't trust them to have that, then what are we doing?
Well, I don't think we can have all of them scheduling the additional help that they're gonna need to clean out a ditch.
But there should be a classification. If I know I can clean this ditch with my blade at, you know, specific angle, and all I need to do is kick some of that gravel back up on and take the sawed back off, that wouldn't require additional help. But if you know in the meantime, I mean, how are they cleaning culverts? Because I haven't seen very many clean ones, so how are they actually physically cleaning them?
They normally go in their backhoe or the excavator, and they dig out.
What about the small ones, though?
Same thing, they dig out in front of them. Some of them, like, they could do with a shovel, it kinda depends. Some of them have crop residue stacked four foot high in them.
See, I know our motor grader, when I lived out in the country, used to get out and shovel, but I'm not sure many of them are anymore.
Exactly, so...
Some of it's more that they're not.
Well, I think...
I know some of them aren't, and, and that is something we talked about last year, about what we can do for part-time help, that someone is responsible to go around with a pickup and a shovel, you know? And the boulders that get left alongside the road in the, in the windrows, the trees that pile up against the culverts.
When you live in the country, you don't have crop residue that we have in them?
No, they don't. That's true.
And, you know, when you have crop residue, mylo stops mixed in the dirt, and it's piled up two or three feet high, a shovel's not the way to get it out of them.
Well, I can tell you the landowner that was on the other side of my home's property used to always clean out the culvert, because he wanted to make sure the land, the water flowed into her property to get away, if that makes sense. So that particular culvert never had an issue.
Okay, we just bought a brand-new backhoe, so what is going to be its primary function?
Bridge crew.
And what does the secondary backhoe do on a regular basis?
They usually go out and clean culverts and other things, so they don't have to pull one off the bridge crew to do it.
So...
They also have a mini excavator, they go out and clean culverts with it, too.
So who is mapping and tracking and operating the backhoe or the mini excavator specifically for this culvert issue? Because I think we can all agree, we've been in the country enough to see that that is an issue. Not only is it due to, you know, pilings up of trees, and like you're saying, crop residue, but it's also just lack of maintenance for quite a few years. So how do you, I mean, there has to be more of a strata here than just two people at the top that are supposed to call the shots for every last individual function of every other employee. Because it's not working.
Personally, if you want my input, it hasn't been working since we downsized the department, and we got rid of the two other supervisory positions. Because we used to have a special projects, which I think did culverts and projects, and then we had a bridge who took care of bridges, and then we had the road supervisor, and then we had a shop foreman that took care of ordering, and then we had a secretary... and then we had a shop foreman that took care of ordering, and then we had a secretary. So, we had five, and now we have three.
Okay, but in that way, we do also have more technology, so there's an easier way to facilitate the organization of it without necessar, I mean, we were just talking about their requesting additional secretarial help in the office, but I don't see in front of me what we need to even make that assessment, because it's not organized, there are no dates. Do you remember, and this is to the board, do you remember that we had Michael contact Norm Bowers from the Kansas Association of Counties, because he is the contract, and I'll, I'll say contracted, I don't know if he's an employee or if he's directly contracted, but he's, he works for the Kansas Association of Counties as the engineer. You met him? He's probably close to retirement, I'd assume, but he's been around long enough, and he's, he's an engineer, and he had, when I contacted him about how to organize some of these issues that we're seeing, he had an official complaint form that, in concern form, whatever you want to call it, word-wise, I think we need to stop being so sensitive about these words, but the complaint form that, that he had, I suggested for Michael to get in contact with him, so he did, and he brought it in, and the board approved it. So, have either one of you seen any of those?
Yeah. We've had some people fill them out.
Aljo, have you seen any of the complaint forms?
No, I haven't seen any complaint forms.
Well, a few weeks ago, I requested to see them, and they don't exist. The department has not been using them, uh, for whatever reason, I don't even care to get into the details of what their justification is, but the problem is, if the commission is approving specific actions to be taken by that department, and it's not happening, we need to follow up on that. So, here we are a year later, after having adopted a specific complaint form, and it's not being used. So, when I requested the complaints, to take them out, from the department, it's basically just a list of, it's a call log. And again, no dates, no people who called in, all we have is pretty much a specific address, just like we have in this report here, just an address, and a potential, you know, culvert issue, hole in the road, stop sign down, et cetera. You cannot organize in that manner. I mean, no wonder the office personnel feels bombarded. You cannot organize without dates and names, and a specific set of paperwork that has been approved for you to follow. So, what do we do for them, to help them get better organized?
You have anything else?
Well, that was a question. Terry, you just said that you, we've had people fill out these complaint forms, yet obviously you don't know that, because I told you I requested them, and they don't exist, so why did you say that?
You know, I'm not going to sit here and argue with you.
It's not an argument.
You're going to sit there and argue with yourself all damn day long, I don't care.
Terry, it's not an argument, you obviously stated something that was not true, because you, you claimed to have known, you said, "We have people filling them out." Who?
We have.
Where have you seen them?
I think we had one in here one day, and a guy filled it in.
I said, "I think they have three or four," is what I was...
Yep.
But that's only three or four, and then I was told that they become two covers of the culvert. So, when she put in her request for the information, I said, "Why don't you just copy out of that book?" And he said, "It becomes two covers." And that's when they should come back to you and say, "It's two covers."
Or, how can you reduce the, if, if they're saying that you have to write down too much information on that one individual piece of paper, then it can be reduced. Maybe there are some details on there that we don't necessarily need, but the list that I got is literally a location and an issue. There's no date, there's not even the person that called in, there's no record. If you call in three different times about the same issue, which we have had people come in here in person and tell us, I mean, we are elected by the public to represent them, we have the public telling us that they have lodged multiple complaints on the same issue, yet we sit here and don't even demand that the department adhere to our recommendations for their system. I mean, I'm not sure what your plan is here, but whatever has been happening is not working. So, could you explain what your plan is to remedy this situation? Because it looks to me as if it's still in the same predicament it was in last year at this time.
Did you guys actually approve the complaint form?
Yes, he brought it.
Well, I know we brought it and showed it to you, but did you guys actually approve it? And say, "This is what we want you to use"?
I'm pretty sure that was the whole, I mean, if we're going to bring it down to whether there was a motion or not, I can't tell you that, but I'm pretty sure that he has met with us weekly, and if he didn't understand that that was the expectation of the board, then maybe he's not fit for his position.
I think you have three or four hundred reasons why he's not fit for his position.
And so, do many other people who are seeing that the deterioration of the Highway Department is continuous.
There's a lot of other people that think he does a good job, too, but they're not the ones whispering in your ear all week, are they?
I don't have people whispering in my ear. We've had people come to public meetings, Terry.
Hell, they sit in here and text you. Everybody is seeing it. They sit there, text away, and then they put their phone down, you pick yours up.
Do you not remember how many public complaints we've had about this department and about these same issues? Are you just going to ignore that? Because it's been over a year.
I get a lot of, I get a lot of compliments on them, too.
You also sit here and say that we have people filling out paperwork that you've never seen, and that when I ask for it, it doesn't exist. So, how can anyone trust what you say?
They can't.
No, they can't.
No one can trust anything I say. They can believe every damn thing you say, believe me. You have an MBA, too bad you don't have a little bit of common sense to go along with it.
Your personal attacks speaks volumes of your mental capacity.
Oh, well, I've been sitting here for a year with your personal attacks.
I'm not, I have never personally attacked you, I've asked you about what you're...
Oh, yes, you have.
No, I have not.
Oh, yes, you have.
Name one personal attack, Terry, please, please do.
I told you a little while ago, I'm not going to sit here all morning and argue with you.
No, I have asked you direct questions about your job. I have asked you direct questions about your job, to which you have never provided an answer.
And I don't have to answer to you, I've told you before. Did you vote for me? No, you're not my constituent.
If you don't think that your job is to address the concerns that have been brought before us publicly...
My job is not to answer to you, I can tell you. You and I don't see anything the same way. We could sit here for days and argue about things.
And Terry, this is exactly why you have brought us to be the fifth-highest taxed county in the entire state, with a poor condition of roads and bridges, and a financial debacle on our hands that we won't dig our way out of for the next ten years.
Oh, that's right, absolutely.
Yes, it is. You've been here long enough.
It's all my fault, yep, it's my fault, all right.
So, what is your plan to remedy any of that?
I thought you had the plans.
You won't answer my questions to get to the actual solutions. You think it's perfectly acceptable to give your subordinate personnel a justifiable and reasonable way to proceed with their paperwork, and it doesn't get done, but that's fine? That's your management technique? When are we going to talk about the pending lawsuit that was caused by the Highway Department? How many more days do we have?
I don't have any details on it.
How many more days do we have to respond?
We don't respond.
We're not going to respond?
The insurance company responds.
Have you contacted the insurance company? So...
They take care of it.
So, we have been, the board has been told that the insurance is, that's a covered, that's a covered, uh, liability?
There isn't a fourth, you're going to...
Uh-uh. No. So, how, how much of a premium increase are we facing?
None.
We won't face any until we're... Until they have to pay something out, so there's no guarantees, just because somebody sued us doesn't mean that they're going to win.
So, how many times has this happened in the last five years?
For Highway Department? Well, no, I take that back.
In the last five years? I think it's probably more than five years.
Was there a premium increase? So, what kind of reprimand is going to happen because of the, the acts of this department that led to this situation?
Probably none.
Why is that?
Someone's going to have to determine that they actually did something wrong first.
Did you...
Just because, you know, just because you have a relationship with the people and you live on their property doesn't necessarily mean they're right. I'm sure it's a legal issue, and it'll get decided there.
That's a cute assumption. The first I was made known of anything was the same time you were, when I received legal documentation in the mail.
You have anything for us, Dawn?
I move to require the Highway Department... To adhere to the complaint forms that were approved previously by the commission.
I have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
I move to require Michael O'Hare to follow up on the previous motion to have him bring forth the Mobile 311 program to the commission for an explanation.
Are you done? Is that it?
She's still typing. And... What did we say that was going to be? Demonstration. And that's what it was.
You get all that done? Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
I move to require disclosure on the part of Highway Department personnel of any kickbacks or personal receipts from companies Lincoln County has made purchases. It might be more proper to have them do it before I disclose publicly, just so you know. I'm giving that opportunity in advance.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
I move to hold a June two thousand eighteen, June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting at an evening time due to the presence of auditors to allow for public attendance.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll vote, I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes. I will be voting no. I am extremely upset about the badger, the bad attitude, the negativity that's been expressed at this commission. I have remained silent, and I will remain silent, I will not partake in that kind of unconstructive dialogue.
That has what to do with the auditor's presence this week? This week of the eighteenth?
I think most everybody that comes in here thinks they get badgers, and we're going to pay for it dearly, especially the next time we need an architect.
Because the seventy thousand dollars we spent on the architect...
Because, because they talk, because they talk to each other, and the next time we need one, we're going to pay for it.
I'm glad that you feel that you got your money's worth, Terry.
Well, I'll tell you, I was in the construction business for thirty years, I think I know a little bit more about how projects work than you do, so, if there's no further discussion, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
I move to have the commission hold evening meetings during the budgeting process to allow for public attendance.
Isn't that same motion here is made?
No, it's not. That's not, that won't be the entire budgeting process.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. There are no further residents coming for the board, we will adjourn and reconvene on June the eleventh, eight AM.